It's Michigan, and I do want to thank the city of St. Joseph for acknowledging that child's safety should be a priority in family court and custody decisions. One in three Michigan families are directly impacted by domestic violence. But abuse also affects everybody in the community. Without proper training for family courts on domestic violence, children continue to be exposed to abuse, and families need more social services, putting extra strain on places like shelters, counseling, and child protective services. Post-separation abuse in family court puts children in harm's way because abusive parents are more likely to seek sole custody and are successful 70% of the time. Tragically, abuse is often not understood or believed by courts, and many children are ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents. I want to share some statistics so you can see why family court reform is needed. 60% of perpetrators who abused their spouse will abuse their children. Adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, such as abuse negatively impacted child's development, their relationships, and their mental and physical health. Most child abuse is perpetrated in the family by a parent. Children are three times more likely to be shot at home than in a mass school shooting. One child dies every six days amid custody fights and family court cases. And in Michigan alone, we've lost 39 children since 2008 during the course of divorce or custody proceedings. One of these children is Rowan Morrie Poles. He was, he lived in Caledonia, and he was not returned to his mother at the end of his father's parenting time, and was later found to be the victim of a murder-suicide. Rowan's mom had been unable to have an Amber Alert issued despite appealing to both the police and a family court judge. A new law has passed in the Michigan House and is being considered by the Senate, and it's called Rowan's Act. This would allow the state police to issue an Amber Alert more quickly when a child is considered to be in danger. We are also trying to establish Kayden's Law in Michigan to prevent future tragedies. Kayden's Law is focused on prioritizing child protection over parent parental rights. This law was named for Kayden Mancuso, a seven-year-old girl who was murdered by her father during court-ordered unsupervised parenting time after the court ignored the father's history of abuse. Kayden's Law would require training for judges about all types of abuse, and judges would need to consider past domestic violence when making custody decisions. Our children's lives are literally dependent on the courts becoming educated on these issues as soon as possible. And I want to thank everybody here for proclaiming November as Family Court Awareness Month in the city of St. Joe. I also want to say that I love seeing so many female faces up there. That's amazing. If you would like to support Kayden's Law, please contact your state representative and the Family and Veterans Committee members in the Michigan House of Representatives. If you would like to support Rowan's Law, please contact your state senator. If you or someone you know is struggling to protect your children in the family court, please contact Protective Parents Michigan or therowanproject.org. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to add to that, it was last year that we did this proclamation, I think Commissioner Fernandez sponsored it, and we passed it unanimously, and so that's why we just wanted to have her come speak again and kind of refresh her memories of what that was all about. And I just want to speak personally from my work that I do at the Children's Advocacy Center, it's very closely tied to the family courts, and we deal with a lot of custody issues, primarily with victims of physical and sexual abuse, so that issue is very close to my heart, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right. Next announcement, we have a proclamation for World Polio Day.
This one's me. So, polio is a disease that peaked in the 1940s and 50s with an average of over 35,000 cases a year. The resulting advancements in medicine and vaccinations have led to the near eradication of this disease that once threatened generations of children. That work, the work that led to our current state in the eradication of polio would not have been achieved without dedicated resources from the medical and scientific communities, the government, and the hard work of volunteer groups all coming together for a common cause. In recognition of some of the, one of those volunteer groups, our friends at the Rotary Club of St. Joseph Benton Harbor have asked us to adopt the following proclamation that is included in your packet, and it is my hope that we can adopt this proclamation and designate October 24th as World Polio Day for the city of St. Joseph.
All right. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the proclamation designating October 24th, 2025 as World Polio Day.
Support.
Abby, call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. We have your live proclamation here. Is anyone accepting this? We got somebody here? Okay.
We have our representative from the Rotary.
Fresh ink. Thank you. Thanks for bringing this to us. All right, we now move on to approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure, is this out of order?
It might be misnumbered a little, but nope, I would go there.
Okay, thank you. This first. Wait, this one first. Looks different. Okay, yes, we do move to approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I support. Okay, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
All right, now on to public comment. This is for items on the consent agenda or not on the agenda. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello. Kim Jorgensen-Gain, Main Street. I would like to add to our knowledge about family court awareness and domestic violence awareness, October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month, intimate partner violence, with the fact that the number-one leading cause of death for pregnant women is intimate partner violence. That's it.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. I'm here tonight, I'm Jeannie Strine. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Parks Advisory Board, which I chair, and to clear up a misunderstanding that came up during a city commission meeting on August 25th. At that time, Chris Cook of Harbor Shores presented a proposed development adjacent to Padler Park, which is down, which is the old water tower site. And Harbor Shores has proposed assisting the funding improvements. As a part of that project, we've had, we had a subcommittee meeting and several meetings leading up to what Padler Park will be. But the history of the initiative I thought was important to, I know I've shared, you've seen the letter, but I thought it was important to put on public record here that since the park board started casting the vision for this site in 2019, when it was first known as the old water tower site, it was always intended to be a kayak SUP launch site, stand-up paddleboard, not jet ski launch. The presentation made by the Parks Board member Karen Lutz to the City Commission on May 24th, 2021 included information about the park's alignment with the 2021 to 2025 Parks Recreation Master Plan to create a city Blue Way Trail map locations for a kayak launch. In fact, the name Padler Park at East Basin was picked for its specificity with the intention of launching non-motorized watercraft. In late 2022, the RFP issued for a kayak concession also states vending may include limited retail sales associated with such use but may not include use of motorized watercraft or any other rentals. In fact, the city of St. Joe's website refers to the park as a water trail, amenities, carry-in boat access, kayaks, stand-up paddleboards, et cetera, seasonal kayak rental fishing, and scenic viewing. So, we met as a board because this came up after that meeting, and in September, we agreed that it was probably good to put it on public record here for future reference. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name is Lisa Vettney. I am at 3007 Bonnie Lane. I cannot make the next meeting, so I have questions about the Marquette development. And so, I also have a question before my questions. So, I'll ask these questions, how do I get my answers? Will, will you answer the following meeting, or you'll email me? Awesome. All right, I cannot see. Okay, first one. Which aspects of the Marquette design did the community have input on? Were they involved in the discussion about the building's height, materials, streetscape, or how the, will affect the foot traffic? Some of these I have changed my mind on, so hold on. What is the plan if the underground parking cannot be built? If land issues are discovered during construction, who's responsible for the cost? What is the city receiving in return for granting the height variance besides the tax revenue, increased tax revenue? What are the plans in place to support the small business during construction period? Is it possible to gather questions from the community and local businesses to create a Q and A and then share them, share the responses with the residents? I know that one's tricky because it's not a city.
Property.
Funded, but I'm sure we can figure that out. I'm double-checking my questions. Has the impact of the community infrastructure been evaluated or discussed? Who will be responsible for the, for covering the additional costs with the new apartments and condos being built? And then, who will be responsible for any increase wear and tear of Lake Bluff Park once the project is complete? That's it? Thank you. Thank you.
For two questions allowed?
One only. One only, sorry. Yeah. Yep. Any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, we are going to move along to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda include the meeting minutes of September 22nd, 2025, invoice and tax disbursements, DDA TIF, Citizens Advisory Council, and special event application, St. Joe Day Fall and Winter Events. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I support.
All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
All right, first item of business is our old business, Whirlpool Centennial Park Trees. Greg, come on up.
As the commission will recall, there was a proposal by Commissioner Sorolla to review and consider the removal of four evergreen trees in Whirlpool Centennial Park at the July 14th meeting. At that time, the commission asked the Parks Board to review and make a recommendation to this city commission to either remove or keep the trees. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board reviewed this item at their September meeting and in a vote four to two, recommended the removal of the trees. A second motion was made to recommend the planning of appropriate vegetation to soften the landscape around the electrical panels that will be visible with the removal of the trees. Any questions?
I guess I could only find the minutes from the August Parks meeting.
They should be out there.
Because that was a two-two vote, right? And then they brought it up again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was at a meeting where there were only four people in attendance. And so, Greg and I talked and decided to bring it back when there was a bigger group present for the meeting. I think, Greg, could you also just speak a little bit about some of the rationale? You have it in the write-up here about the height and how it would be perceived if it was a structure. I think that's probably worth sharing with the group.
Okay. So, the four trees have grown to a height that blocks the view of the beach in many locations. Our zoning ordinance has a Lake Bluff Scenic View Protection Overlay District that protects the public sightlines from Lake Bluff Park towards Lake Michigan shoreline and regulates the height of structures built within that area. While not considered structures, the trees have reached a height that goes beyond this limit and similarly impact sightlines from the bluff. Additionally, the city has a tree trimming and removal policy that was approved in 2001 that is intended to prevent removal of healthy trees without appropriate rationale. All four trees are considered healthy, and as such, the commission is required to determine whether the block view is sufficient rationale for the removal of these trees.
So, they're too big to replant?
Could they be replanted? Could you spade them up and replant them? You could, but it's going to be a lot more expensive than just to remove them and... To be honest, the big...
The giant pine tree.
That evergreen, probably not going to find a spade big enough to remove that one.
I see that there was a second motion by the Parks Board to, you know, to put alternative vegetation more appropriate. Any initial thoughts as to what that might look like, or too early to know on that, what they were thinking?
So, the, there's, if you've been down there, there's some, some electrical panels that provide power for the pump house. One of them is actually, is AP's transfer switch there, so it's not ours. So, there's some equipment there that's going to become exposed. We are going to put an enclosure around that, you know, to, for safety, but we'd like to just soften that so that view is not just of a decorative vinyl fence as well. So, nothing real tall, just something to soften that view up instead of just staring at a fence.
Yep. And I imagine the Parks Board will get to, they'll come up with what goes into that, you know, and aid your staff and team, so more to come. I'll stay tuned for that portion of it.
I think we've spoken about this at previous meetings, but do these trees provide any kind of shade for that area down there?
Nobody from the water park uses that, all that shade that comes from that big pine tree.
Yeah, the biggest thing that I think will be an impact from that tree is the fact that we light it during the holiday season. But no, I mean, they're, they're evergreens, they're, they're not shade trees, so they're not really... They were, they were planted, I think, just, again, to soften what used to be there because we moved, the new building is, is forward as westward of the existing of the old pump house. So, those trees were planted to soften the old pump house's location and those panels. But now that we moved the building forward, it does, it does provide some softening of the building, but you'll notice those panels as soon as those trees come out, so.
And the little, the littler trees need to come out, too.
Yeah, I mean, they're, I mean, they're going to keep growing, too. So, there's, in total, there's four that are going to cause a problem eventually. The one already does, the other three, they're going to keep growing and will create obstruction as well.
Problem being the sightlines only, right?
For me, the Parks Board recommended it, so I, you know, I'm happy there's a plan to do something different. It sounds, you know, as I learned more and kind of talked through, you know, this, that these were, these were trees that got put in as decorative things after we made improvements. These are not trees that have been there for, you know, for years, and it sounds like a poor choice may have been made, you know, in decision-making on how to decorate and cover up the previous work that we had there. So, with all that being said, I'd be personally comfortable knowing that the Parks Board has looked at this now, you know, and then I'm comfortable with their, accepting their recommendation and moving forward on this.
Yeah, I'd have to agree. I don't love the idea of just chopping down trees willy-nilly, but if there's a rationale for it, and we did what we said we wanted to do, is kick it to the Parks Board, see what they had to say, and they're supporting it, so I think I'm going to lean on that.
And especially with this not being natural landscape, you know, that has always been there, this was, we put this there, we put something we probably shouldn't have put there, and now we are having to fix that, you know, for those reasons, uncomfortable moving forward on this one.
And for what it's worth, I think that the fact that we put something there and it doesn't comply with our own requirements for the overlay district, I know it's not meant to apply to trees, but to me, that disconnect feels really stark.
Agreed.
Other questions? What's the pleasure of the commission?
I'll move to direct staff to remove the four trees located between the railroad tracks and the restroom building at Whirlpool Centennial Park and recommend the...
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, housing choice, and supply options for planning commission review and recommendation.
Does this you touch?
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, so commissioners, I'm excited to bring this to you today, especially because we're having so many really exciting discussions, not just this, not just inside city hall, but in the community, about how much more housing and housing options are needed within the city of St. Joseph. So, reading through this, and then I'll probably talk some more, because accessory dwelling units actually really excite me, is nerdy municipal stuff. So, the 2024 Benton Harbor-St. Joseph Housing Market Analysis, completed by Cornerstone Alliance, references the need for 525 residential rental units and 375 residential dwelling units before 2028. While the city has approved new housing developments during the past six months, with additional projects under review, more housing options are needed. There are a number of best practices that the city can learn from. Some communities have made changes to their zoning ordinances to allow two dwelling units per residential parcel, allowing accessory dwelling units, or expanding housing options in currently non-residential districts. To further address the need for new housing options, I'm recommending that the city commission direct the planning commission to prioritize exploring options to add housing density within the city, but specifically starting with accessory dwelling units. Our conversation about residential density is a larger one within the city, but I feel like ADUs and us prioritizing that with the planning commission is a really smart move to start meeting some of that housing demand. Knowing the city as well as we all do, thinking about the places where ADUs could possibly go in, I don't see ADUs changing the landscape of a neighborhood dramatically and quickly, but I do think it's a step in the right direction for us. Accessory dwelling units are really regulated municipality by municipality. We have a fabulous option here in the city of St. Joseph to really make this match what our neighborhoods want and what our residents want as well. Traverse City is one that while they allow residential, they allow those residential dwelling units, the owner actually has to also reside on the property. So, it gives us, as we think about how our community demographics change and whether people have adult children living with them at home, or parents are aging in place and staying in that spot, accessory dwelling units gives quite a bit of flexibility there. There's some other really interesting municipalities that, you know, maybe have a similar economy to us, like Traverse City, or a similar size, that are doing the accessory dwelling unit thing already and doing it well. Niles is one of them, they permit them as, as a special land use. They only do that in their low and medium-density residential districts, but that would be something for us to consider. Charlevoix also is one that does it exclusively in our two zones, and Clark Township actually has some of the most liberal, for lack of a better word, use of ADU units, and they've seen it, and they've seen it be really successful across the board. I think we have an opportunity to match that here in the city of St. Joseph, and I've heard from residents that it would be a wonderful addition for them personally. I think what's important for us as a commission right now is to state that that is something that's important to us, something that we want the planning commission to prioritize. ADUs have come up for the planning commission, you know, a couple times. I remember them about a year ago. I am positive they came up before, but I think that we need to direct them to specifically look at ADUs.
I couldn't agree more. I mean, I remember very well the joint session that we held of, between the city commission and, you know, the planning commission, and, you know, I, I think we had expressed a level of desire for more housing and to see that, and I would love to see, ADUs are an example of something that I agree could be very easily take, taken, you know, implemented if we were to prioritize it at that planning commission level, because that is where we need to scope out and make those adjustments, you know, and all of the things to seriously look at implementing some of these things. And at the end of the day, this is all about making the best use of our space for our residents to maximize, you know, what they can do with their land, and it will help us bring in more residents, which is what we do, so that we can, we can regrow our city. Yeah, I couldn't agree more strongly, you know, with, with directing them to prioritize this, so that we can see some results from these evaluations and what ordinance changes need to be made to make these happen.
Yeah, the footprint of the city is actually quite small, and density is really the only way we can grow our tax base, and this is a great example of that and something I'm strongly for.
And, and there's no negative to having them pursue, you know, seeing what changes we could do. They'll bring it back to us anyway, so, but I would love to have them explore that and see what they can do.
Yeah, I think the obvious question's going to be parking, right, on these ADUs. Like everything is downtown, how are we going to address the parking issue? And, you know, I'm sure the planning commission will come up with some creative ideas, bring it back to this body, and we'll have a lot more input.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah, I'd have to agree with it all, and if I said anything more, it'd be redundant, but I'm curious what, you know, the language of directing them to prioritize. I mean, is there any way to be more specific, or what value does this bring to the planning commission?
I think that it's just about helping them prioritize their work. I think it is, you know, I'll look to Lori if she's got any ideas that I might be missing. I think it's hard to put a timeframe on it or anything like that, because some of these conversations are complex, and they take a few meetings to, you know, think of an idea, direct staff to go back and research it, come back with something else, and so I think that's difficult. They always take citizen requests first, so that also can be a little bit limiting, but I do think this could sort of jump the queue with some of the other work that they might have in mind.
So, given that...
Lori, any brilliant ideas beyond that?
You summed it up well. If this is the strongest possible signal that can be sent from this body to that body to prioritize this...
I also wonder, you know, we have talked about this, we've had meetings about this, could we put in three, six months from now, a report on one of our agendas and just say, what is the progress made on this? And it's just something that we don't lose sight of again.
I think you could make a motion asking for it to come back to this body within six months or provide a report on status.
Yeah. I'm going to be honest, I think, I think sooner is acceptable. Or, yeah, sorry. Oh, I'm just going to say, because ADUs are not, are not new. I mean, you know, I...
We're not reading nothing wheel.
Absolutely not. And, you know, even when we've gone to, you know, we've gone to conferences, they will have entire presentations, like, all of these exist. We don't need to reinvent the wheel here. I, it is valuable for us to look at other municipalities. I, I, it is valuable for us to look at other municipalities. We can learn, we can learn from other municipalities. And so I think that we can speed that up. The reality is too, you know, there are maybe some areas in the city where this could be, you know, this could come into play. We know that by the, by the cornerstone study, we have until 2028 to get these units.
Right.
Going. And accessory dwelling units are not going to, are not going to solve the entire problem, but I, I don't want to put any more roadblocks in front of us getting there.
Maybe into the calendar.
I mean, they meet once a month, so three months.
I, I think if we could report, I mean, we can report back, right? We can figure out where we're at. And then, you know, I think that because, like, you know, Emily, I've been really, really hot on ADUs for a while. You know, the, again, those resources exist, so we know who to talk to if we need to get the resources in to move this, to move this forward.
Why don't we say in three months, let's get a report and just say, even if it's, hey, we've been doing research, this is all we have so far, but we are making progress, then we'll at least know it's being worked on.
Yeah.
Do we think three months is sufficient?
Or maybe or sooner in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Three.
We don't want.
Within three months?
Do you want, I, I don't mean to be nitpicky. They will have, they've already had their October meeting, I believe. So, uh, they will have a November, December and January would be three months for their meetings, or you could do three months from today. Do you want it like in January after three meetings?
That feels.
Great.
Can we direct them to begin reviewing and provide a status report in?
In January.
After three.
Yeah, you can say three months. I just want to make sure I'm directing staff appropriately. I don't think we.
If they come up with everything and it's ready for us to go in three months, that's great. But I don't want to get three months from now. And it's like, oh yeah, the status report is we will look at it soon.
Yep.
Tess, I'm just going to make one suggestion. It sounds like you've had a lot of exposure to this, so whatever for me, send that to Kristen.
Oh, I'd be, yeah, I'd be happy to.
That would be helpful.
Well, I move to direct the planning commission to begin reviewing changes to the zoning ordinance to increase housing choice and supply options, starting with accessory dwelling units and provide a report to the city commission within the next three months.
I support. Any public comment on the matter?
Anne Brown, Sixway Market Street. Um, I've, um, had discussions with some neighbors, uh, about this density that you want to increase. But, and, um, if we wanted density, we would have moved, we would live in a denser area. Um, we kind of want to protect our neighborhoods. Um, we don't want extra little structures building up, cramming things in. I'm already next to the infamous short terminal that's six feet on one side. I wouldn't want somebody behind me to build another structure right on, you know, the property line there, you know, um, it's a neighborhood. Um, if you want density, you're already putting in all these multifamily apartment complexes. We want homes. We want space for families, kids, grandkids, the dogs, the bunny rabbits, the squirrels, whatever. This is a small confined area and it's what attracts people here to the charm. And when you add all these, as you call them, um, extra buildings, which have a nice thought, you know, for your mother, your uh, mother-in-law, that's, that's fine, but, um, this could get out of hand and, um, you can't take back what you've lost. So that's my concern and the concerns of others in my neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
Kim Jorgensen, Gain Again, Main Street. Accessory dwelling units are a big thing that we talk about from a sustainability standpoint. And that it is just increasing people's options on the property that they own. And, um, a lot of that is going up, which is not really going to affect, you know, uh, sidelines and, you know, things like that, sideline setbacks and, uh, you know, there are things like increasing the percentage of your property that can be paved for additional parking, you know, things like that. But that's all part of the process, right? Is reviewing those zoning ordinances to ensure that they, you know, maintain some flavor of neighborhoods and things like that. It's, um, it's really only positive. So I'm a big fan and I'm really glad to see that the commission is encouraging the planning commission to move forward with more information, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Commissioners, my name's Al Moss and I live at 1215 Lake Boulevard. I concur with what I've heard most of you say that, that it's should be looked at. Uh, I'm in favor of them. Go if I win. I like the idea.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Rose, 217 State Street. I'm just really, really quick on a follow-up. It's kind of an addendum with the ADUs, something to think about. Um, I think a concern of the community will be short-term rentals. I'm making sure that these kind of ADUs aren't used for that kind of thing. That really does lose that community neighborhood feel, which is important to us. Um, I think the importance of verticality is great. Um, I think there's a lot of properties in the town that we can maybe better use. Um, especially in the south part of the city, there are some, um, properties that we can maybe see about where you're purchasing. Um, but, uh, it's kind of one of those joint, um, discussions of making sure that, hey, this is for family personal use. This is not to make money. And just something to, as discussions continue, keep in mind, please.
Thank you. Other public comment? All right. We had a motion, we had a second. Abby call the roll. Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ori?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, city hall elevator update. Right here.
This year's capital improvement budget included 125,000 to bring the city hall elevator into compliance with state regulations. The elevator, which is original to the building right around 1996 and acquiring parts for repairs is becoming increasingly difficult and expensive to locate. On a few occasions recently, the elevator has been down for extended periods of time while we've looked for and waited for the parts needed. And then last year, we've experienced numerous occasions where city staff has been stuck in the elevator. Uh, our current provider, McNally Elevator, recommended we update the elevator, uh, which doing so requires the city to comply with the latest state codes. With that, uh, staff prepared an RFP for the update of the elevator, which was released to prospective bidders back in August. Uh, we received, received four responses, uh, from TK Elevator, McNally Elevator, Great Lakes and Elevator Service of Indiana. After a thorough review and consideration, the staff is recommending the proposal, uh, of the low bidder McNally Elevator of Kalamazoo in the amount of 107,955. Um, it should also be noted, this will not be the final cost for this project as we will need to hire an electrician for a very small part of the project. Um, as well as Summit Fire Protection to install new fire alarm sensors and update the card access program. And if the commission may recall, Summit was the, um, firm that we had hired out a year ago to update city hall's fire alarm system. Updating the elevator at that time was part of the project. Because of the age of the elevator, they couldn't do that update. So we moved some money forward from that as part of this project to cover that. So that's kind of why things were split a little bit because of the work Summit has to do is was accounted for, but then we had, but we couldn't do it. So please, uh, consider a motion to accept the proposal from McNally Elevator, who, in the amount of 107,955 dollars.
Hey, seems like a no-brainer. We want to be in compliance and we don't want people stuck in the elevator. Thank you. Yeah, no questions for me.
I'll know, I'll still choose to take the stairs, but, um.
I move to accept the proposal from McNally, McNally Elevator of Kalamazoo in the amount of 107,955 dollars to be paid from the capital improvement fund and authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents on behalf of the city.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? All right. Abby call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ori?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is truck or treat street closures.
Greg gets so tall. The city's hosting our annual truck or treat event on Saturday, October 25th from four o'clock PM to six o'clock PM. This year, we received business owner feedback that they would like to see more events in our downtown in order to draw people in. Um, and so we are proposing that we move the, our truck or treat event from the Howard Ice Arena parking lot to, um, Lake Boulevard, which would require a road, a temporary road closure. Um, this is the same area that we closed for our Light Up the Bluff event in December. Um, a couple of blocks on Lake Boulevard and into the 500 block of Broad Street. We're just requesting that, um, a motion in support of the closure would be from 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM to allow the trucks to be able to park, um, and to ensure that there aren't cars blocking, um, the street where, where our trucks would need to be.
I can't wait. I can't wait to see all the trick-or-treaters downtown.
Yeah. I'm really excited that it's moving to this new location. I think, and I'm excited to see how many more people come out for it. Any questions?
No, it'll be safer in that location too. So that's, that's a great benefit.
I move to support the closure of Lake Boulevard from Elm to Pleasant Streets, in addition to the 500 block of Broad Street on October 25th from 5:00 AM until 7:00 PM to host the city's truck or treat event downtown.
I support. Any public comment? All right. Abby call the roll. Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ori?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Onto reports. Hydrant flushing update.
Emily's bringing up a PowerPoint. Makes it a little more interesting. So, um, so city staff recently completed hydrant flushing in the city, which that was a good opportunity to provide a report on it. Um, the program was a cooperative effort between the engineering department, the public works department and the public safety department with the public safety department doing the lion's share of the work because they were out there actually physically, uh, flushing the hydrants. A picture you see there is how they go about doing it. They put a diffuser on it. That's the orange looking thing, um, that's designed to try to reduce property damage when it's being flushed. And, uh, there's a white cap on there. We actually have to put dechlorination tablets in, um, so that it doesn't discharge chlorinated water to surface bodies because that's bad for fish and biotic, you know, the, the wildlife, whatever have you. So, so, okay, there we go. Um, so why do we do this? First of all, it's required by Eagle. So, um, in fact, in this year's sanitary survey, they told us they wanted to do this once every year. Now, we really don't have the staffing to do that. Um, we've been on a like a two to three year cadence. Uh, we're going to try to reduce that to a two-year cadence and then inspect hydrants in the off years just to satisfy Eagle that we're looking at them, getting our hands on them. Um, it does improve water quality. You're turning over the water in the system. We do get sediment and rust in our system. It helps blow some of that out. Um, and residents have experienced that when, depending on the timing of when they open their faucet, when we're doing the, uh, doing the flushing, um, it helps us with hydrant operations and maintenance because we will log when we don't have a hydrant that's operating either fully or completely inoperable. We use city works to create a work order and then we go out and fix them. Uh, we also collect fire flow and hydraulic system information that helps us in ways. First of all, we can kind of get an idea how we're doing with our water main replacement projects. Are we getting the bang for the buck there? Um, it helps us prioritize future projects where we see areas that need improvement. And then vendors or, or other developers will come in and ask us for these flows because they need them as they're assessing properties. And so we have that information readily available for them. Um, it helps us with our inventory verification. That's one of the key components of an asset management plan. You need to know what you have in the way of assets. You need to know where they're located and the condition of them. This program does all of that. And finally, it improves public safety officer familiarity with the system. They're out. Uh, the hydraulics in our system aren't really consistent. Some areas are stronger than others. So if they happen to be pulling up to a fire, they know maybe what a better hydrant is versus pulling off another one. So here are the numbers from this year's program. We have a total of 481 hydrants in our system. We flushed 444. We found that 59 were in need of maintenance. We did skip 37 of them for various reasons. Sometimes are obstructed, sometimes people plant landscaping around them, so we have to go out there and take care of that. Um, sometimes they're just in operable period. We can't open them up. And then other times they're too close to construction. If we have guys in a utility trench actually trying to lay pipe, we can't be flooding that trench while they're working. So, the next slide.
Oh, sorry.
So I wanted to provide this slide to show you the, the whole hydraulic thing and the improvement that we've seen. So you have 2019 there and then 2025. And so blue is really good. That's the highest level of flows. Green is next best. And what you want to see is a general trend and the kind of blobology there that the blue is getting bigger, the green is getting bigger and the yellow and red are getting smaller and, and we're achieving that. Um, it bones me out a little bit. Back in 1999, and this was before I started at the city, um, they recognized that our water distribution system needed a lot of work. We couldn't really do that comparison because the data wasn't in the same format, but you would see a stark difference if we went over that 26-year period. And it really says something that over the long term, um, our city has supported upgrading our infrastructure and keeping us safe. And then the final slide, um, around 2010, we started dedicating ourselves to be doing a better job with our reliability program. And what that means is you're out there turning your valves and flowing your hydrants on a more regular basis, um, basis. And the first time we did the hydrant flushing was in 2012. At that time, we had not public safety, but we had fire and police. We really didn't get good buy-in from the fire department. They basically wouldn't go out and do it. Um, since that time, the police department or the public safety department has really stepped up. Uh, because that's really the lion's share again of the work is going out there and doing that. So if you looked at what we paid in 2012 and you adjusted it for inflation, we saved this year $50,000 alone. Um, in costs that we would have paid a contractor to do that. And we've done this a few times with the public safety department. So I think the public safety department deserves, deserves an attaboy for doing that. We really appreciate it. So I don't know if there are any questions, but.
Thank you.
No, just like to add on to that attaboy. Um, there was a fire on Archer. It was pretty advanced. The fact that our fire department and the assist from some neighboring departments contained it to just that house, didn't spread to the adjacent homes is kind of a miracle.
Yeah, especially when you see the video.
They're so close and that, that fire was so advanced, um, really a stellar job.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the update.
And for making it easy as always. Yeah.
I understood it. All right. Item number 12, Housing Commission Annual Report to the City Commission.
Good evening. I too do not like public speaking, so forgive me for stammering. Um, I did, you do have the PowerPoint. Um, I'm going to start with the ordinance. Obviously there's an ordinance that dictates that the housing commission provides an annual report. We, um, were found fiscal year and 2024 to be in a deficit. Um, we had to create an elimination plan. Um, we went through that. It was approved. In February, I believe, we have provided monthly updates to the city commission. Um, I try to send over the financials to Ben regularly, um, so that he has that in front of him. Um, we have turned things around, um, with, um, watching, spending, um, watching overtime and just monitoring things. We have, we're now in a positive state, so I remain committed to keep us in a positive state. Obviously, uh, you know, a lot of our funding depends on, A, occupancy. depends on, A, occupancy, turnaround time, financials, and the physical state of the building. So we have 107 units at this time. 100 are occupied. I'm currently trying to get the 15th floor renovated, fixed, repaired, because we had a roof leak. That I estimate to bring in an additional 30,000 in revenue. I did attach our, my five-year action plan, which is for the capital fund. Does anybody have any questions with that? It's just pretty basic.
Just want to clear up a little bit. If you can go back to the slide.
Here?
Yep. So in '24, that's the net position comparison that caused the deficit elimination plan. The next slide will show you the difference, much better position. But then they've done a great job. And if you can go to the next slide, Emily. One more, please. So this is this year's income. They're net positive. And I wanted to highlight that the capital grant revenue, 600 grand, that's the big help.
Yeah. Great. Anything else? Were you finished? Great. Thank you. Yeah, this is this, like you said, an annual report that comes to us, but we have been receiving your monthly reports through Ben. So thank you for that. And I know that this has been a multiple year thing that you've had to work really hard at turning this place around. So thank you for all your efforts. And I know you have staff and board who've helped you as well. So please pass thanks along to everybody involved with getting this set straight.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I have to say that, I don't know, a few years ago when we first were worried about this. I was like, I don't know how they're going to turn this around. So congratulations to you guys for doing that.
Very good.
Come a long way. Keep it up, honey.
Takes a village. All right, on to the general election reminder. Is that you, Abby?
That would be me.
All right.
Yep, just a quick reminder that the general election is coming up on Tuesday, November 4th. We will have two ways of voting this year for this election, I should say. Absentee voting and Election Day in-person voting. There is no early in-person voting for this election. Absentee ballots are actively available from my office. So if you need one, like one, please stop in and see the clerk and I can help you get one of those. The last day to pick up an absentee ballot in person is, or excuse me, the last day to request an absentee ballot by mail is Friday, October 31st by 5:00. That Saturday, the 1st, we will be open here. So if you can't make it in during the week, come in and see us on Saturday and we'll get you a ballot. And then the last day to pick up an absentee ballot, which would be in person, is the Monday before the election by 4:00. So we are looking forward to a very busy and successful election.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, that's it for reports. We are on to city manager comments.
Thank you. Mike stole my thunder a little bit, but I do also want to recognize Steve and his team for the incredible work that they did on the fire on Archer Avenue. You know, Steve is taking our fire department from, or the fireside of public safety from good to better. He is really, he has made some really smart choices, bringing in Mike Phelps, who is fabulous, and getting our folks really trained up and strengthening the relationship with our colleagues in other municipalities. And that was obvious from what played out on Archer Avenue. So credit to you and your team, who I know have been working really hard. Also wanted to celebrate Kayla for a minute because we, she has been doing our special events for October. Play St. Joe was on October 4th. All day busking in the downtown. Some really great musical acts. In addition, there was a fire dancer and a magician. And it was just such a lovely day in downtown St. Joe. She is also working hard on Scary Movie Night, which is coming up on Saturday at 7:30 PM. We're playing Young Frankenstein. And as you just heard about, she's spearheading Truck or Treat as well, moving that to the downtown, working closely with Cameron. But just doing a ton of work on making those events happen. So just wanted to recognize her for all of her efforts.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner comments.
Well, I wasn't prepared to say anything, probably because I'm denying that this is my last meeting, but I have to say just a few words. I want to say that it has been such a pleasure to work with the rest of the commissioners up here. They are really, I have respect for all of them. They all do a lot of homework for everything that we talk about up here. And we may have different opinions, but I kind of appreciate that. I think we want a commission that has some different opinions. And I just have loved working with all of them. And we've, I've worked with a stellar staff, the whole staff in St. Joe, City of St. Joe is amazing. And it just, you couldn't hope for a better place to be a commissioner. I'm, I'm really going to miss it.
That is true. Thank you. You will be missed. Others?
I'm good tonight.
Okay. All good. Did we talk about the Spooktacular? That's coming, that goes right before the Scary Movie Night.
Oh, yes.
Spooktacular is, that's right, on May 18th.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So, yeah, so the Lighthouse, in addition to Spooktacular, I talk a lot of the Lighthouse and ADUs, but so the Lighthouse will actually be open for a spooky Lighthouse tour. I've, all the volunteers will be dressing up in costume. It's pretty nautical themed so far. There's a smoke machine, lots of fun out there, but it will be, it will be free and open from 11:00 AM until 4:00 PM. So especially if you haven't visited the Lighthouse, this Saturday is a great opportunity to do that, 11 to 4:00. Costume volunteers. They're so excited about it.
Cute. Fabulous. Okay, I think that is concluding our meet. No, we have more. We have more to do. We have a closed session, so. Need a motion for that.
Yeah.
This is a spirit of purpose of doing the.
Yes.
I'm moved to enter in a closed session to consider the annual personnel evaluation of City Manager Emily Packworth at her request pursuant to MCL 15.2688.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory? Or Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Sorry. You twice. Okay. So we're going to leave that.
I move to return to open session.
Support.
Public comment? All right, Abby, call a roll. Commissioner O'Ree?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Ree? Or Sir O'Leary?
Sorry. You've never done that before, Nicole.
Yes.
We really want to hear from Tess today.
All right, the Commission has completed City Manager Hackworth's evaluation. And I will read a little blurb, that's what we want to do. City Manager Emily Hackworth has received strong praise from the city commissioners for her proactive leadership, dedication to progress, and commitment to improving the resident and customer experience. Commissioners highlighted her ability to take on tough issues, lead with transparency, and build strong relationships across the community and county. She's been recognized for streamlining development processes, effectively communicating city initiatives, and demonstrating the flexibility to adapt when needed, all while maintaining a clear vision for the city's future. The Commission is also looking forward to working with City Manager Hackworth on growth opportunities and continued improvements. All right, that concludes our meeting then at, no? To accept that. Motion to...
For what you approve here or what you'd like to approve?
Oh yeah, right, for the, we need to move for her performance payment. Should I do it? Yep, I move to approve a performance payment in the amount of $4,000.
And to set...
And to set the annual review for April 13th, 2026.
I support.
Okay. Public comment? Abby, call a roll. Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirala?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Ree?
Yes.
Yay, okay. Then that concludes our meeting at 8:06 PM.